Mark, we're ready. You're good.
Evening. Welcome to the July 11th City Council meeting for the City Huber Heights regular session, started here at 7:00 PM. Please stand for the invocation given by Pastor John Cocklaw of the Compassion Free Methodist Church at 6875 Old Troy Pike Road, Huber Heights, Ohio.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you so much for allowing us to be here in this period. It is because we do not have anything else we did that, but it is because of you who love us, who care for us. We thank you for bringing everybody here. Now, Lord, we pray that there are many things we need to bring before you. Especially, we pray for those who lost their little ones, their friends, their husbands, their children. We pray for them, especially for those whom we heard from dark, everywhere. We ask you, Jesus, to comfort their families, whatever they are. We know you are with them. We know you care for them. We pray for them this time. Now, Lord, as we come before you, we pray that you may help our brothers and sisters who are here to discuss the things which can develop our city here in Huber Heights. We ask you to give them one heart, one mind, one thought, so that we can, they can build this city, not only this city, also in this nation. We pray for each one of them who brings ideas, new ideas. We pray that you may guide them, you may give them a wisdom to know what they need to do in their discussions, showing one-ness, showing love, showing kindness. We ask you, Jesus, to help each one of them to build a new relationship with you, because you are only one who leads, who guides, and who teaches. We pray that you may give them wisdom. And we ask you to protect all the police who live this Huber Heights city, not only this in this city, but also everywhere. We pray for them. They are protecting us. You give them the way they need to protect each one of us in this city. Oh, God, we pray for them, protect them wherever they go, wherever they meet with evil. Lord, help them to conquer. You are the only one who can keep them. You are the only one who can give them faith. We pray for them. And also, we pray for the firefighters, whatever they are. I know they meet with harmful sins. We pray for them, Lord. Watch over them wherever they go, to help other, all citizens. We ask you to watch over them. Now, Lord, as we come before you, we bring all agenda, all things we, on this agenda, we ask you to guide and to protect and to give wisdom to each one of them who's going to build this city. We need, Lord, in this city. We need all things come from you, not to come from anybody. We know if you will not build this city, nobody will do it unless you are with here. That's why we are here, to be in your hands, to guide us and to watch over us and to teach us and to help us, to accomplish anything we have other friends, our citizens here. Lord, I pray for them. They give their time for us, for us, all citizens who live here in this Huber Heights. They give their time for thinking about us. That's why I pray for them. Jesus, give them power to know how they need to live, to know how they need to build. Oh, God, be with them. I pray all of these things in the name of Jesus.
Join me in the bloodshed of the nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the good republic where we stand, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pass it with me, dear.
Mr. Shaw, here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Starline.
Here.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Otto.
Here.
Mrs. Blankenship.
Here.
Mr. Lyons.
Here.
Mayor McMasters.
Here.
At this time, I'd like to most, or excuse Judy Blankenship from the meeting. Mr. Shaw.
A second.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Starline.
Here.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Otto.
Yes.
Mrs. Burge.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
And that's approved. Moving on to approval of the minutes, we have one set of minutes for approval this evening, June 27th. If there are no corrections of these minutes, we'll stand as approved. And council's wish, special presentations, there's no special presentations this evening. Citizen comment?
We just have one, Mr. Rondick, 5908 Oak Creek Trail.
Good evening, Mr. Rondick.
Thanks to Mrs. Smith for taking the initiative for the flag ceremony tomorrow. I wish I could be there, but I'll still be at work. Correcting a wrong-sized flag is an initiative that's long overdue, so I thank her. I believe two weeks ago during a meeting here, Ms. Smith asked about the spreadsheet on the Music Center that was forwarded to me, about the 750K direct billing, police, how you're paying for that out of the general fund overtime or something like that, and would be corrected, and other indirect costs, and that was supposed to be provided. I'm just curious if that's been provided, because I haven't seen a copy from any of the council folks that I communicate with. I can only assume that it hasn't been gotten since courtesy copies never followed up to me. Please clarify. I would like to see an update on the 2025 Plan. Lots of things are in it, but there's not much dirt movement around the Music Center. Where are we as a city based on the plan? We have not seen any due diligence from the developer, his team, and it was broadcast over the airwaves of a hotel. Maybe it's another failure. Since nothing has happened, you know, I'm not sure how much the Music Center is a magnet since there's not much going on. Also, City Manager Monthly Reports, they were stopped somewhere around January, then they started back up, then they stopped, then they started back up. I think we're a couple months behind. I'm not curious if they're going to be on every month, or do I have to do public requests for the public documents? That's all I got. And then I'll reserve my comment for that one later.
Got it. Thank you very much. And just so you know, Mr. Rondick, we had a pretty good discussion about the Music Center financials, which is posted under the Music Center last week, so, and with all the details behind it as well, so you can look for it there. There also was one in the read-ahead for the work session, but that one doesn't have all the background worksheets in it, so I recommend going to the Rose Music Center and looking for it.
I have a real long one, I have some pages.
I believe it's 90 pages in there. It could be, because it has all the details for all the expenditure so far this year.
I didn't know if they were all, like the ones for the 750 that I closely watched, the ones that Ms. Smith had so effortlessly asked for. I didn't see those in there. It's in that one, I apologize for asking.
The amount of money that's currently in the Parks and Recreation budget, which would reflect the 750 advance, is not in that particular document, but the money that's been spent so far through May is in that document. So, the balance in the Parks and Recreation, you could do a quick calculation, and that it ended with 225 last year, and the Music Center, so far as to the good, about 300,000, so it should be around 500,000, more or less. But without, the balance that's in the Parks and Recreation Fund, I guess, is interesting, but not as interesting as the current financials of the Music Center. So, if it's important, maybe we can publish the balance in the Parks and Recreation Fund as well.
There's a monthly fund report that is included in the finance section, and as well, it's available online, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. The 2025 Plan, we also discussed in the last worksheet. We've given staff to the end of August, I believe, to prepare a report that's similar to the one that we saw from the Administration Committee meeting two years ago, so it'll be almost a two-year update, and should have the same kind of information that's in there. And the City Manager's Monthly Report, yes, there actually is a place for the City Manager's Monthly Report, but as we know now with my communication with Mr. Shaw, that actually had been put under Documents in one part of the website, and should have also gone under City Manager's Report. So, we saw the May, or is the June one posted?
Yeah, they're posted.
The June one is posted as well. Okay, so, the City Manager's Report, Monthly Report now, because there was a weekly report section, and then the, and then the monthly one, so the June one, I can't remember if I reviewed, I think I reviewed that one, didn't I? Because I made mention of the Chambersburg Road update on that, so I'm not really sure which one, my interest right now. But, okay, but those are online as well. Okay. City Manager's Report. Oh, sorry, Citizens Registered Speak on Items.
Mr. Rondick is requested to speak on items 12K and 12O.
Now, City Manager's Report.
Just one more, one more point regarding the previous comments. There was a comment about make a correction to police overtime. I'm not sure where that might have come from. There's pretty comprehensive detail as to what funds were expended and what the cost that was in the report too. So, just, again, point back to that report, so just want to follow up on that point. Regarding the activities here of late, the energy aggregation candidates are finalizing those interviews this week, and I believe, I'd have to check to see when the last one is, but I think that they tried to time it so that the information can get into the packet for work session discussion for that recommendation, I think is what the schedule was. But I know there was one today earlier, and they are wrapping that up with all four of the respondents to the RFP. Second thing that I'd like to touch on is the great turnout for the Star Spangled Heights. It was absolutely amazing what our Arts and Beautification Commission has done in jumping in, taking that ball, and taking it to the next level. The food trucks, the vendors, just the overall organization, and events for the day were great. We have a hard time estimating how many people are there. I know it took longer to get out, and it's probably one of the fullest I've seen of as far as people packed back to the back of the park itself for years. If we talked to, we went and talked and kind of sensed to some of the food truck vendors as to how many customers they think they saw, and some of them were relating, based on some other festivals, et cetera, 10,000, 12,000 people through the day. Again, that's not scientific, that's just kind of a guess of people that are used to seeing crowds, so I know all of them are interested, and I imagine it'll probably grow. A few of them got worn out, ran out of food and everything, so that's always a good sign when you, when you're able to successfully operate your food truck and other things. Parade was a great turnout, great to see this Brand Pike packed with people lined all the way from top to bottom, and all the participation there, so great thanks to Arts and Beautification. It was, I don't want to say dropped in their lap, but they were asked to take over that portion of it. They had already done the parade, and immediately the next day, we sat debrief a little bit, and they've already got some plans and ideas to make next year even better. So, we've really kind of hit that bubble of expansion, and I really think that that particular event is going to be a destination per se, and an event not just in Huber Heights, but many other people in and around the region will be dedicated to coming to because of the great results, not to mention the great fireworks as well, so that went well. And the last thing, and final thing, Chief Mark Leitner is a grandfather today, so just wanted to make mention of that, so congratulations to him.
Thank you very much. Moving on then to pending business, 11A, please read the ordinance.
Item 11A, an ordinance to approve a major change to the previously approved basic and detailed development plans to amend zoning case 11-01 to add a pedestrian entrance from Charles Gate Road to the Huber Heights Recreation and Activities Center at the northwest corner of Brand Pike and Shaw Road, zoning case 16-23 at the third reading.
Thank you very much. And call in City Manager Rob Schommer for comments.
Yes, this has been through the entire process, including two public hearings, including some information sessions, or informational discussions and work sessions between both the development of this item and the readings itself. Tonight, it's at the third reading, and up for consideration by council regarding the pedestrian entrance, as was described, discussed throughout the planning commission, major change process.
Okay, thank you very much. And council discussion? Now, I personally know that we did not come with a recommendation out of the work session for this, and I know we have Ms. Blankenship missing tonight, so I would hope that we could pass on to a fourth reading, so that we can get all the input from all council members. On their council. Okay, all right, so we'll pass it on to a fourth reading, see it next council meeting. Thank you very much. 11B, please read the resolution.
Item 11B, a resolution designating public depositories for city funds at the third reading.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I might have to recuse myself on this topic. Thank you.
Remember that by now, shouldn't I? Please read the resolution.
I do.
My bad. Call in City Manager Rob Schommer for comments.
Yes, this is something that is required every five years for the city to do, and it designates banks as eligible depositories of city funds. There's certain requirements and restrictions regarding the institutions that either will accept, agree to, or that we can deposit and make transaction with. There were applications from eight institutions. It does not necessarily mean that we are doing business with all eight of those, it just means those are eight that are eligible, and it is part of a financing auditing step for the type of governmental-based accounting that is done here. This is at the third reading, and we ask it to consider for adoption tonight.
Thank you very much. And council, we have a motion to adopt. Mr. Campbell.
Motion to adopt.
Mr. Starline.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Starline.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Otto.
Yes.
Mrs. Burge.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw is recused, I'm sorry. And Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
And pass the 6-0. And we'll wait for Mr. Shaw. Thank you. 11C, please read the resolution.
Item 11C, a resolution amending resolution number 2015-R-6264, authorizing the city manager to increase the annual not-to-exceed amount with vendor AE David and the Police Division at the third reading.
Thank you very much. Call in City Manager Rob Schommer for comments.
Yes, thank you. As originally presented by the Police Division, the original allotted amount or expected expenditure with the uniform company was set at the beginning of year legislation. However, with the hiring of four replacement new police officers, that particular equipping of those officers was not counted in the original budget projections last year, and to make sure to accommodate that and any additional needs through the remainder of the year for uniform and equipment replacement, it's requested that an additional $13,500 be added to that spending limit to increase it and not to exceed it at $45,000. And this is at its third reading, has been vetted through committee, and we ask that it's considered for adoption tonight.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to adopt? Mr. Otto.
Some move.
Thank you. Ms. Burge, discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Otto.
Yes.
Mrs. Burge.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Starline.
Yes.
Thank you, and pass the 7-0. Moving on to 12, new business, 12A, please read the ordinance.
Item 12A, an ordinance approving certain recommendations of the Huber Heights Charter Review Commission and directing the boards of elections of Montgomery County, Ohio, and Miami County, Ohio, to place on the ballot at the November 8, 2016, general election to be held in the city of Huber Heights, the question of amending sections 2.01, 3.02, 4.04, 4.07, 4.08, 5.04, 5.06, and 5.07 of the city charter, and declaring an emergency at the first reading.
Thank you very much. And call in City Manager Rob Schommer for comments.
Yes, upon commissioning of the Charter Review Commission, not to be repetitive, they were tasked for coming up with a variety of suggested modifications and amendments to the city charter. Those amendments have been supplied and passed through. That commission has been brought to the council committee, or the work session as a committee of the whole, and has been vetted and reviewed there. It was a recommendation from the committee or the work session to bring all of those items forward, to consider having placed on the November ballot. I believe there's eight sections in total that have suggested amendments. Also, we'll note that there's a relatively detailed memorandum that was supplied by Mr. McDonald regarding a few of the sections, and I'm sure Tony probably has a couple of comments regarding that for some of the suggested verbiage, et cetera.
As Mr. Schommer indicated, there is some information that was distributed as part of the packet from Mr. McDonald concerning some of the language, specifically in section 2.01, Form of Government, and he fears that some of the language that might be contained in there would unnecessarily or negatively limit the powers of the council to act in future actions if they were to be adopted. He feels it's extremely limiting language, and he thought it was appropriate to bring it to council's attention to at least consider that issue in deciding whether you wanted this change to be made. There'd be a couple options. One would be to have some discussion around it and decide on a rewording of the language that then would be vetted again by the city attorney. The other option would be to send it back to the Charter Review Commission for some discussion, and then back to the council work session on that particular section. And as it relates to this legislation in its entirety, I think the recommendation is to pass this to a second reading so that it can be considered and discussed further. You could either, you know, take some action now, or if it was council's wish to strike section 201 entirely from the legislation and proceed with the other changes at this time, irrespective of that section, that could be an amendment to the legislation as well.
Okay, thank you. And call on Council Member Nancy Burge for comments.
I have a question for Mr. McDonald. What specifically in here do you think would limit us?
Here's Mr. Montgomery.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I too am working off of Jerry's memo. Jerry departed the office, and he's out all this week, and is absolutely, completely inaccessible. So, from that, I mean, I would simply defer to the memo itself, and I can go through that probably offline and offer additional comments if necessary.
The specific language in my conversations with him is the part where, the sentence that says, "The council shall constitute the governing bodies with powers to pass ordinances, to adopt resolutions, and to exercise all powers provided by this charter." I think it's that last part of the clause, "and to exercise all powers provided by this charter," that creates a question of ambiguity in respect to this section, because he feels that that might limit the council to only act with powers that are specifically defined within the charter, and at the exclusion to other powers that might be granted to council through the Ohio Constitution, or High Revise Code, or other sources of authority.
Okay. All right. Well, the initial response is the recommendations to consider any amendments, have the first reading tonight, but be written as emergency legislation. Second reading would have to be on July 25. At that point, in order to meet the deadline for the board of elections, we would have to wait the third reading, so we're running out of time to get this on the ballot. Any recommendations?
Mr. Starline.
In light of the new information from the law department, and the fact that if I understand correctly, we do have enough time to at least go to one more work session and one more regular session before we then would have to do it. And either way, if we do it tonight, or do it in two weeks, we have to do the emergency if we're going to pass and adopt it. I think it's probably prudent of us to take it to a second reading, consider this, discuss it at hopefully next work session, and then go from there. It was, I mean, we got this when the packet came out, but we didn't have this information, and I haven't attended all the meetings, but for those that have, the law department was asked to weigh in on this, and I know that Jerry McDonald's been out on some medical leave and all of that, so I think it'd probably be best for us to have the time, and by then, the law director himself will be back as well, so he can give us his information, if anything, I would think. So, I would, I would think it's probably best for us to take it to a second reading, and we've done the first reading here, and that way, we don't need to amend it tonight. If anything comes out of work session, then we can do one amendment at one time and be done with it procedurally.
Agreed.
That's my thoughts.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll send this back to the work session.
I would like to make a statement before we close this, though. I want to state that I'm very proud of the work that the Charter Commission did, and that how they took ownership of the recommendations, and how they stood up for them at our work session. I'd also like to state that, Mr. Mayor, I'm very disappointed in your response at the working session, just, and it, just because you don't agree with our recommendations, I think it's unfortunate for our city that you could not show leadership by being impartial on this issue and letting the voters decide.
I guess that gives me an opportunity to say that, yes, I do believe that the recommendation to have resolutions be one reading does not give the city the opportunity to discuss the legislation between the first time it comes up in a council meeting. And so, as I pointed out in the work session, this would have meant that a major project like the acquisition of the land, the $700,000 purchase of the land for the Aquatic Center would have been, since it was a resolution, would have been one reading, and would not have been an emergency, and the city would have seen that for one meeting and not got the opportunity to discuss it before council got the, before council passed it, and that would have been the normal way of business. All right? So, my point being, something as important as a $700,000 acquisition should give the voters the opportunity- should give the voters the opportunity to discuss for a week or two weeks prior to that being passed, or council should go on record as saying that the public doesn't need to have that discussion, which is what happened back in March of two thousand and eleven. So, for those people, for the public, to be able to have a discussion about whether they deserve that opportunity or not is something that I believe is important to keep in the charter. And so, I will be advocating that residents make sure that the charter provides that protection so that they can see important legislation like that on more than one occasion, or force the council into saying that it's not that important to keep the public.
Sure, that's not, that is not the issue here. We cannot undo what was done in two thousand and eleven. We fully vetted this at all of our meetings, and you had the opportunity to come in and express your views, which you did not choose to take advantage of. But we feel, as a group of staff and council and citizens, that there is enough protection built into this that if executed properly, it will ensure that the public has full transparency in what we're doing, and will have a voice in what we're doing. And this does not in any way, shape, or form sidestep that process.
And I am going to make the argument otherwise. And the fact of the matter is, if it's only required to be brought up one time in a meeting and goes into effect immediately, that certainly puts the public at a disadvantage for seeing what the council is doing. Mr. Otto?
I would like to argue that with our new format, with the work session, or let's call it effective meeting as a whole, that those discussions would take place at, so at least two meetings. And the work session and then the council session where it would be voted on, so that opportunity would effectively be there.
And as we know from the March eleventh meeting-
Again, we function under a different-
That even if we had a committee of the whole, and it was publicized or broadcast in video, that discussion would not be part of that work session because that was all done under executive session because it was the acquisition of property. So, you wouldn't have that protection for which you're, for which you're referring to now. And to Ms. Burge's point, as me not going to the commission's work session all the time, this has been an issue in the city since the first time that I walked in here and saw a council meeting because I was concerned about how many times emergency legislation comes up. So, I've written numerous articles outlining my position that we need to do something so that we can change the current system so that it helps streamline the process so that items that don't need three readings can get read. But we need to keep the protections for the bigger items. So, not only have I written numerous articles, I've said it here on the dais at least three times. I had an interview with every single one of the members. I brought that same point up in each interview. So, if I need to come to the commission, I don't understand why, why that would be. I've made my point clear for three years, that that's my position. It hasn't changed just because the recommendation has come.
But I also believe that those actions are highly dependent upon the makeup of council as well. I don't believe that type of action would occur today. And even with the, we saw, even with the way it was set up before with the requirement of three readings, you still had the same effect that you didn't want. So, I think the council makeup was-
We had council go on record saying that they didn't believe that it was important enough to bring the citizens in for comment.
Different council.
And you're gonna have a different council in a year and a half, and you'll have a different council three and a half years later, and a different council six years. The idea is to make the charter in such a fashion to provide those protections in case you end up with council that has a different value system than what we may see here.
This is not a fail-safe system. I mean, if we have future councils come in here, they can take any one of these paragraphs in the charter and change them. Yes, they can. All cities do it all around. They can put it out to the voters and change any. Well, no, but I mean, they could make our recommendation and send it to the voters. So, what we're putting here is not cast in stone forever.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I just want to make a comment. I've been, I'm not on the Charter Commission, but I have been attending the majority of the meetings. And I don't share the same opinion that our mayor does. I don't think you guys have done a terrible job. I think you've done an excellent job. And I want to just point out that I take exceptional note to your chairman, Mr. King. He runs a very good meeting. He is on top of it. The dialogue that you guys have is immeasurable. It is fantastic to see it. You guys might not all agree, but you can professionally agree to disagree, and that's very refreshing to see. And I think you've done, I think you've done an outstanding job. And I appreciate the hard work and the dedication of you coming back week after week and doing your due diligence in between. Now, I guess what I would like to ask then, my understanding when we were, when you guys were speaking about this is that it can be changed on, it can go to one reading, but if we want it to go to three or four, then that's for our prerogative, okay? So, not every single piece of legislation has to go to just one reading. I'm gonna reiterate that when we have marathon meetings, we are pushing the residents and the businesses away from attending the meetings. They watch them online, but you can't be an active participant online. You can't ask the screen or computer a question and have us answer it. So, if anything, it's not so much that because of the way the charter's gonna be changed, it's making it difficult for the residents to get the information. It's the marathon meetings that's keeping them away from getting the information. And I just wanted to just tell the volunteers who applied for the position, got the position, you're doing a great job. You're taking this very serious, because it is a serious. You have the most important role right now in this city. And I just want to say thank you for what you've done. I appreciate it. And you were, it is a thankless job, unfortunately, but I'm here to say thank you.
All right, so we'll send this back in the work session next Tuesday. Thank you. Moving on to the next twelve, that was new business, twelve A, so we'll go to twelve B. New resolution.
Item twelve B, a resolution appointing Scott Lieberman, Esquire, as special counsel to the city to represent it with regard to the sale or transfer of land at declaring an emergency at the first reading.
Thank you very much. Call City Manager Rob Scholmer for comments.
Yes, we have a potential for a real estate transaction. The developer is represented also by our law firm. And with that, it is suggested and recommended that we have special counsel as we have had in previous occasions when this has occurred. So, this resolution accommodates that due to the ability of the following resolution and potential to move forward in having conversations with this developer. It is asked that the readings are waived, and it is passed tonight.
Thank you very much. And call on Councilmember Richard Shaw for comments.
Thank you. As a recommendation from staff, we are going to, I'm moving forward today with a motion to waive the second and third readings and appoint Scott Lieberman as special counsel.
Thank you. And second from Ms. Smith?
Yes, thank you, second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Starline?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
And pass the seven zero. Motion to adopt? Mr. Starline?
Move to adopt.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Starline?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
And pass the seven zero. Moving on to twelve C. Please read the resolution.
Item twelve C, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a letter of intent for the purpose of negotiating and entering into an agreement for the development of a recreation and event complex and declaring an emergency at the first reading.
Thank you very much. Call City Manager Rob Scholmer for comments.
Yes, thank you. This basically states our intent to move forward and begin discussions to see if there is a deal to be made regarding this land and the proposed use. It is asked that we are able to get this particular item passed tonight as well with the waiving of the second and third readings so that we can move forward as the interested party is anxiously awaiting the ability to sit down and begin the negotiation.
Thank you very much. And call on Richard Shaw for comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this point in time, I would like to go ahead and move with the recommendation of staff to waive the second, third readings to proceed with the intent.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Starline?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
And pass the seven zero. Motion to adopt. Mr. Otto?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Starline?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
And pass the seven zero. Moving on to items twelve D through twelve I. We'll ask the court of council to read all of them together and take a motion to waive the second and third readings, and then adopt each individually. Ms. Smith?
May I raise a question of privilege, please?
Go ahead.
What we just passed a moment ago, at what time will we be at liberty to discuss this with everybody else?
Mr. Scholmer will take your recommendation. Yes, as we briefly touched on that, we want to reach out, get both parties to sign this. And at the next stage, when we have a draft agreement to bring it in for the discussion at work session, at that time, all details will be certainly brought forward.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item twelve D, a resolution declaring it necessary to improve public streets and easements in section two, phase two, by constructing and installing on certain property within the city, street improvements, water and sewer lines, storm drains, lighting, irrigation lines, and signage and all necessary appurtenances at the first reading. Item twelve E, an ordinance determining to proceed with the improvement of public streets and easements in section two, phase two, by constructing and installing on certain property within the city, street improvements, water and sewer lines, storm drains, lighting, irrigation lines, signage, and all necessary appurtenances at the first reading. Item twelve F, a resolution declaring it necessary to improve public streets and easements in section three, phase three, by constructing and installing on certain property within the city, street improvements, water and sewer lines, storm drains, lighting, irrigation lines, and signage and all necessary appurtenances at the first reading. Item twelve G, an ordinance determining to proceed with the improvement of public streets and easements in section three, phase three, by constructing and installing on certain property within the city, street improvements, water and sewer lines, storm drains, lighting, irrigation lines, signage, and all necessary appurtenances at the first reading. Item twelve H, a resolution declaring it necessary to improve public streets and easements in section four, phase five, by constructing and installing on certain property within the city, street improvements, water and sewer lines, storm drains, lighting, irrigation lines, and signage, and all necessary appurtenances at the first reading. Item twelve I, an ordinance determining to proceed with the improvement of public streets and easements in section four, phase five, by constructing and installing on certain property within the city, street improvements, water and sewer lines, storm drains, lighting, irrigation lines, signage, and all necessary appurtenances at the first reading.
Thank you very much. And we'll call on City Manager Rob Scholmer for comments.
Yes, these are the special assessments that were referred to and discussed previously as part of the follow-up to the eighteenth amendment that was passed a little while ago. Regarding all of these items, I believe the intention is to pass them to a second reading and consider for adoption at that time.
Thank you very much. Call on Ms. Smith for comments.
I have to be honest with you. Can somebody please explain to me how we discussed at a work session on Tuesday night that the supplemental appropriations were grouped together as one big group that was assigned to me, but by Friday, this got modified. And I'm not comfortable making any motions until we discuss what happened.
And Ms. Smith, supplemental appropriations is actually later on in the agenda. So, if we want to discuss that, then it seems like it'd be a little bit more appropriate.
Were these not the same things that were a part of this one right here? Or are you saying that this is a separate section?
Yes, these particular resolutions and ordinances were discussed separately from the supplemental appropriations. So, supplemental appropriation legislation is, which item?
K and L.
K and L, as a matter of fact. So, and that's the one that got split up into K and L.
Okay, so, when this got assigned to me on Friday, it got assigned to me because we spoke about these items, from my understanding, and that we were gonna waive the second and third reading.
That was the recommendation from the committee at work session on items twelve D through twelve I.
Yes, so that seems to be a little different than what City Manager Rob Scholmer just spoke about because that is, the recommendation was to waive the second and third reading.
So, what happened? What, where was the process? I mean, how did it change?
Well, I personally don't know if Mr. Scholmer just doesn't have the same sheet as we do, or if you remember differently than the way we remember it.
I know the term counting votes has been used before. Quite frankly, that's what I did, understanding and realizing that there's other items of city business that may need to be attended to. We're just moving this on until such time that all members of council are here to vote on those particular items.
Okay, all right. So, I believe that the recommendation from the committee was to waive the second and third readings, but given the absence of Ms. Blankenship, it might be more representative of the council if we pass this on to a second reading and consider waiving the third reading after that. But that'd be, that's council's wish, as a matter of fact, so if we-
So, were there five council members that agreed to that change by Friday?
Well, there really isn't a change. These are the legis, these are the, these are the motions, all right? The, Mr. Scholmer would have been more accurate if he would have said the council recommended waiving the second and third readings tonight, but given Ms. Blankenship's absence, we may choose to move on to a second reading. But that, that would be-
So, why wasn't I notified?
I believe it probably just happened here in the last five minutes.
Okay, so, this is something that I was complaining about as a resident, that the packet would go out by Friday, and then it got, whatever happened, things were amended, modified, changed by Monday. And I'm just saying that I have, I have an issue with this, just not being notified. And the motion is to waive it to the, the motion is to continue to the second reading?
Uh, the recommendation.
The recommendation, and I make the motion to go to a second reading.
And, so, we'll have a recommendation to go to a second reading, uh, council's wish. And we'll pass it on to, to the next one.
And that would, just to clarify, be items twelve D through twelve I, all to the second.
That's correct. That's correct.
And just further clarification, there is no change to the items that were in the packet, it is only on the discussion points of whether it would be waived tonight or passed on, all the information, there is the same information that you all, uh, saw at the work session.
Uh, that's right.
We did, we did not, uh, supplement anything in that particular section.
And, and it's interesting, 'cause I actually think that adding council's recommendation into the packet might be useful for the residents, so that they knew if they needed to come out for one particular meeting or not, but that actually hasn't been a practice, so most of the residents wouldn't have known that, that the, um, the recommendation was to waive the second and third reading. Some of them who watched the work session might have, but that actually may be a good, uh, practice to get into, and that way, if somebody sees it's the first reading of something and thinks that they have two more readings to come and make their comments, it might be good to highlight in the read ahead that, that council plans to pass it at, at the next meeting. So, we'll, uh, consider that, uh, for future. Ms. Burge?
Uh, when we had the work session and, and went over the, um, the, um, carriage trails elements, we didn't talk about appropriations. It was pretty, a pretty quick move through. Can you explain to me why we split out K and L here?
Okay, tho- those are the next agenda items, and yes, I, I think we intend to have that discussion, uh, here when we, uh...
Okay, all right.
Finish the discussion through I.
You have J before those two.
Okay. All right. So, going on to the second reading for items, uh, D through I. Moving on to twelve J, please read the resolution.
Item twelve J, a resolution authorizing the city manager to expend funds to cover the cost of various goods and services ordered by city departments, divisions, and declaring an emergency at the first reading.
Thank you very much. Call on City Manager Rob Schommer for comments.
Yes, um, what we call the amnesty legislation, we touched, uh, on this at the work session. Um, we discussed the one from key ads, uh, we attempted to get a detailed invoice, and I believe it's nearly two years later, uh, it came back up in the system. We've talked about things like this occurring in, in billing systems, uh, and in order to pay from a previous year, uh, from this year's funds, obviously that comes up as amnesty. There was previous, um, purchase orders, this was part of the original project, but that gap of the nine hundred and some dollars, uh, was not properly invoiced and we wouldn't pay it until proper invoicing was, was submitted. Um, the second one that is described in there, uh, similar situation, we're on a three-year contract, I believe with Rossi, the original appropriation and signature of the, um, or in an authorization of the contract, uh, was in a previous year, and in order to get the appro- or get the encumbrance for the appropriated amount that was in the twenty sixteen budget, uh, again, to pay the invoice, um, uh, we bring it forward here tonight as well. So, those are the two items, and, uh, as detailed, we ask that they are passed this evening.
Thank you very much. And council work session, uh, recommendation on this was to waive the second and third.
That, that says that, that's incorrect, 'cause this didn't go through the work session.
Well, how do you like that? I thought we did discuss the key, uh, key ads item.
Amnesty doesn't, it's not, it's a recent practice, not to go through the work session for amnesty.
Okay.
Mr. Campbell?
Move to waive the second, third readings.
Thank you. Mr. Lyons?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Smith?
Um, when Glenn and I went to the conference back in March, we a- attended one of the, the, the presentations, seminars, if you will, um, and one of the questions that I've had was, what are we gonna talk about amnesty legislation? And boy, I'll tell you what, those instructors snapped their heads so fast, I thought they were gonna get whiplash, and they said, "What do you mean amnesty legislation?" And I said, "Well, you know, you know, amnesty legislation." Explained it, I think Glenn and I were explaining it, and, uh, they said, "We don't do amnesty legislations, that is no-no." So, I just want you guys to be aware that this is what we were taught in a conference, and it kinda concerns me that, um, that we have an amnesty when we were just taught that that's, um, not appropriate.
And, Ms. Otto, did you want to extend that thought?
I will say that, um, I concur that the, the general feeling that we received there was that amnesty legislation was not something that was typically, um, done by most other municipalities.
And, Mr. Schommer, I know that we had this discussion a few sessions previously, and, uh, if I recall correctly, it has a lot to do with the fact that we, as a, as a council, have decided that we want to have a lot more input into the financial process, we wanna have a lot more oversight into that process, so we make our finance department go through procedures that other municipalities don't go through, and this right here is a result of that, and also one of the reasons why we keep getting, uh, our gold standard award from our finance department with distinction, with distinction, because we, as a council, decided that we wanted to have more oversight. We could correct the fact that we have amnesty legislation by giving the finance department more freedom, that is more representative of what other municipalities do, what you do that at the peril of, uh, having something split through the cracks. So, although most municipalities don't have to have amnesty legislation, we do because we have higher standards. And we could go back and review the entire discussion, uh, from a few sessions ago if we, if we need to with Mr. Bell, but I don't believe that we actually do, since we've had this discussion numerous times.
I would just, uh, add in comment that during the audit that you referred to, uh, if there was a purchase, that does happen, uh, that, uh, the, uh, purchase order may not have, uh, been the entire amount because of an unforeseen, uh, expense, or for situations like this where from a previous year, the auditors look for the piece of legislation. Amnesty is a, uh, like we call a tissue a Kleenex, that's just the, the slang term for the amnesty legislation here. True amnesty is, uh, not really what's going on, we're merely exercising the required steps and the purchasing procedures established by the city to expend funds for previously ordered goods or services. Uh, we've translated that term down to the word amnesty. If the auditor's office or anyone had issue with it, they see this, these pieces of resolution or these pieces of legislation in our audits, they, they review them, and they are very happy to see them, that the, uh, level of accountability and transparency for all transactions are there. So, as far as it being a no-no or wrong, uh, maybe other agencies don't do it, but it might be because they're, uh, the way that they budget is, is perhaps different, or their purchasing, uh, procedures or requirements are set up differently, but, uh, from all of the audits that we've had, uh, this has certainly not been a frowned upon process, it's an expected process to be followed based on, uh, these occurrences that happen within our purchasing procedures.
Thank you very much. Um, I've forgotten.
We have a first and second on the motion to waive on, uh, item twelve J.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Starline?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
And passes six to one, motion to adopt. Mr. Lyons?
Move to adopt.
Ms. Burge? Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Starline?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
And passes six to zero. Six to one. Six to one, thank you. And moving on to the next, uh, item, we have, uh, okay, twelve K, please read the ordinance.
Item twelve K, an ordinance, amending ordinance number two zero one five dash R dash two one nine zero by making supplemental appropriations for expenses of the city of Huber Heights, Ohio, for the period beginning January first, two thousand and sixteen, and ending December thirty first, two thousand and sixteen, at the first reading.
Thank you very much. Call on City Manager Rob Schommer for comments.
Yes, this is a supplemental appropriation to the budget as, uh, was described. The overall, uh, financial impact of, let me scroll down, I believe, is sixty, something, yeah, sixty-three thousand. Uh, we have a variety of things in there, such as matching donations, uh, an amount of eight hundred dollars for the arts and beautification, uh, fund, we also have, um, movement in the drug enforcement fund, law enforcement fund, state highway maintenance fund, fire fund, uh, et cetera, uh, the ones listed and detailed within the ordinance that was in the packet. Uh, these, uh, particular items are, um, ready to make appropriated within the respective budgets, and it is asked that it is considered tonight for adoption by waiving the second and third on this particular supplemental.
Thank you very much. And we'll call on, uh, Council Member Tyler for comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this item was presented at, uh, work session as a combined item with the item, the materials that are in Agenda Item L. After the meeting was over last Tuesday, I looked over my notes and realized that I wanted to ask for the items to be separated, so that certain items could be handled, and if other items could not pass because, as has been indicated, counting the votes, um, I didn't think that enough votes would be here to pass it, and I didn't wanna have all of the supplementals, um, held up. In that regard, I called Jim Bell, asking for information Wednesday afternoon. I asked him if he knew of a way to do what I was asking, I explained to him what I was asking for, and asked him to provide me information. He gave me his opinion, but he also indicated that he didn't feel comfortable doing anything on the recommendation of just one council member. I told him I understood and appreciated that, and I was not asking for that to be done, I wanted information. I made that clear. My understanding is Jim understood that, 'cause Jim indicated that he would ask to get more information as well. He contacted, to my knowledge, Mr. Schommer, um, and discussed it with him. I think that's an absolutely appropriate thing for a city staff member to do, um, I think it's completely appropriate for Mr. Schommer to have weighed in on the matter after being brought into the loop by a staff member subordinate to him, I mean that only in level. Late Wednesday afternoon, Mr. Bell contacted me and pretty much said, "Mr. Starline, it's been taken care of." I didn't ask any further. I didn't feel any need to yell at him or tell him that he had done something wrong. I was noting that he had done, as best I could tell, some initiative and some industriousness to move forward, but I made sure that he understood that I was asking for info, and I was not directing him to do anything. That being said, it was brought up Friday, this past Friday, that, my understanding, the mayor was concerned about how the item had actually been split up into two items at that point, and that he was frustrated that it had gone from one item out of work session into two items. I understood his concern, explained to him the process that I just explained to everyone here. He gave me his opinion, I'll let him speak to that, but ultimately, it was already done and it was out to the packet. I've taken phone calls from other council members, wondering what and why, I've explained to them, as I've explained here on the record. If there was a mistake in terms of asking for information, that may be someone's opinion, it's not mine, I asked for info. Do I think anyone on staff did anything wrong? I don't think so. If there was a mistake made unwilling, unwittingly, it was me for asking for information instead of contacting everyone, but that's where, unfortunately, from what I understand, thanks to the White opinion, it becomes difficult to do that. Because I told Jim that if he needed me to send out an email to all of council and Rob, indicating, "Hey, this is what I'm asking for information-wise," I would gladly do it. Jim did not indicate that he needed that at that time, but I made sure that he knew I would do it so that there was, uh, record if need be. The problem is, is if my colleagues start debating that issue and start giving input one way or the other, at this point, I'm a little worried that we would run into having a meeting by email, which is what the White opinion from the Supreme Court of Ohio does not let us do. In the end, here we are tonight, we have two items. The information contained in K and L is identical to what was in the work session last Tuesday. Were there items that were added? Amounts that were...
Those were, well, Mr. Mr. Bell had referenced those in the work session, they, they weren't in the packet for the work session as part of the original supplemental appropriations ordinance, but he did reference those and explain that those would be added to the legislation as part of the work session, discussion.
So, we were aware of those, even if they weren't in the read ahead, we were aware. Okay, that helps on that. In that regard, everyone had the information last week and they have it now. My understanding is that the recommendation would be to pass the supplemental appropriation in K, and then take the items in L to a second reading. The reason I would understand that is because the items in K, I would understand, would potentially have enough votes to pass, whereas item L, because of absences, do not have enough votes to pass. It would be counterproductive for this council, although it's definitely within our discretion, to call something to vote that we know will not have enough votes to pass. Why would we do that? It's a rhetorical question, but why would we do that? Now, the underlying issue, just briefly, this is the eighteenth amendment and the financials that go along with it. In April, I believe it's April eleventh, April eleventh of this year...
Mr. Tyler, is K the eighteenth amendment, or is L the eighteenth amendment?
We have, uh, Mr. Campbell to speak on item K, or, I'm, I'm sorry, on item L, so, if, just limit to, to K and how L came about, that, that's perfectly fine.
Okay.
I'm sure we'll take comments on under L.
Understood. Okay. So, my understanding was that the city staff showing initiative, and, as I think Mr. Schommer's indicated, and I don't wanna speak for him, but I think he was counting the votes as well, and I'm getting a nod to, to affirm that assumption. I think that's where we ended. If there was a change of process, if there's a way that we should've done this differently for the future, okay, let's talk about that process and go forward. If anyone wants to yell and scream at me for, forgetting to bring this up at work session, given everything else that was going on, I'll take that on my shoulders, yell and scream as you like. as you like. In the end, though, this is here so that items of the city's business can get passed as need be and that's why I asked for that information and then it was done. That's all I have to report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Starline. Will you make a motion?
Yes, I will move to waive the second and third readings on the ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Second.
Counsel's discussion. Miss Burge?
On K, which is where we are, it's on the ordinance amending, our ordinance ending in two one nine oh, that one includes one point one seven seven million dollars for Carriage Trails. Well, I'm looking at it right here. If, I'm looking at the ordinance number.
The ordinance itself?
It's two oh one five oh, two one nine oh.
That's, two one nine oh is the budget ordinance that was passed for the whole year. So, any supplemental appropriation throughout the year amends the original budget ordinance, which is the two one nine oh ordinance.
Okay, and that's what I'm trying to see in this package here, the breakdown that you mentioned a few minutes ago about what it, what it included.
That would be in Exhibits A and B to the, to the ordinance.
I'm down at the bottom.
Okay, this one has a, just Exhibit A, but and then the other one has Exhibit A.
Is, okay. Is there an urgency in passing this tonight?
The first one that, the one that we're talking about now, the non, what I'll refer to as the non-DECK one, it is, it has been asked by the Finance Department specifically for some of the, the match for donations, the cash charity fund to match deposits. Those are necessary transactions that are part of the normal course of business that is a request of the Finance Department as of today that those are passed.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes. Rob, could K and L be sent back to the work session and then brought back to the next council meeting after we've had our read aheads and the discussions and so on?
If that's counsel's wish, we will.
And is there anything that's not going to be taken care of in the way of business? Can we work around that and make that happen?
I can't speak specifically. The cash charity fund might be the only issue, but I'm sure the timeframe that we have, we can make something happen.
And certainly we could entertain that. However, we did have the discussion on each one of these items and without actually checking the tape, I think we should go with the committee's recommendation on these particular items. Like Mr. Starline noted, I was a little concerned about the process of splitting them out. However, I'm not at all concerned about this particular piece of legislation being passed tonight and just to, to go along with these recommendations on these particular items.
I'm not concerned either, but to follow through with how we have been doing business this year and there's some reason we split that out and I know that we didn't have that level of discussion at the last work session. So, if we could just rewind, start over, I don't think anything's been done wrong, but if those could be sent back to the work session and we could have that dialogue and that read ahead, because what I don't think was in the read ahead is the reason why we split these out. And there's got to be some justification why we went from one ordinance to two.
Well, I believe Mr. Starline has actually explained that in his talk today and basically the Carriage Trails appropriations and.
Yeah, you know, we've had discussion from the dais that some members of council feel they've been treated differently than others as it relates to read aheads and so on. And just to avoid any of that, if staff could work through and allow this to go back to work session, we could back up and do everything a hundred percent.
And we could, the, now, the recommendation that I would have had for Mr. Starline to proceed in the same manner would have been to let the committee recommendation and the legislation to come forward the way that it was in committee and then propose an amendment to the legislation, which would have allowed us to take care of this tonight as well. So, under those circumstances, I would have thought that council would have taken care of these items and taken into consideration Mr. Starline's contention that the Carriage Trail items probably would not pass tonight. So, an amendment that would have allowed us to go forward on these, I would think if the discussion had started that way, that we could have taken these items and, and passed them tonight. So, I'm not seeing that there's a lot of difference in that and to let the Finance Department go ahead with these items, which council was good with during the work session, seems to me to be a prudent, prudent way forward. Mr. Starline?
I understand the purpose of why it was asked if these could have been separated. However, I feel that because we as a council of the whole agreed to waive the second and third reading for the entire supplemental funds right here that has DECK in it, to ask staff to take DECK out of it and leave everything else so we can pass this because DECK's not going to be, it wouldn't pass with the DECK information in here. And I want you to know that I've had a lot of people from Carriage Trails reach out to me and frankly, they're getting tired of it. I'm getting tired of it. It feels like discrimination because of where we are. This should have, were there five council members that directed Mr. Shomar to change this legislation?
We've already established that. We've had that, that conversation.
I had, no, I'm asking this question because it wasn't established. I'd like you to tell me.
It is. No, it was, there was not.
So, was there a violation of the charter?
No, there's not a violation of the charter.
So, then can somebody please explain to me why I get a phone call late Friday evening chastising me because I recommended us ordering a new flag to Mr. Shomar, yet I didn't have four other council members? This is just a flag we're talking about and now we're in.
That's not part of this discussion.
It is.
We've been making twenty minutes.
It is, because you know why? Some, you guys, this is not how this city was supposed to run. This is not how it was.
You're absolutely right. I need to have a discussion about council members and discipline. And it happened a number of times this particular week. So, if you want to have a discussion about council members and discipline, we can, but we're not going to have it now on this item. What we have here is a process that went awry to the way that it normally goes. We have two pieces of legislation on the table. We have a motion on the table to waive the second and third readings. We also have Mr. Campbell's recommendation that we don't waive the second and third readings and we send it back to council members. That, this discussion needs to stay on track to the motion on the table. Mr. Otto?
Just to provide my involvement in the conversation, I also reached out to Mr. Bell with the same concern. And Ms. Smith, with all due respect, this move was meant to show respect for the residents of Carriage Trails and that development because there were a few of us who knew very well by counting heads that if we had moved forward with the recommendation, this would have all failed.
You're right, and that's what I was expecting because that's the way the proper process is supposed to be. I don't know. Why would you guys do that? Why are you doing it to DECK? Why are you guys doing it to Carriage Trails residents? That's what they want to know.
Again, this was to benefit Carriage Trails and DECK by, by.
By two members of council that is the best interest to separate it?
Nobody did it or asked for anything. It was simply a showing of concern, Ms. Smith.
So, are you saying that Mr. Shomar did it on his own? Is that what you're trying to say?
I don't know. Who made the call to make the change? I couldn't tell you. I just reached out to Mr. Bell to explain my concern, that I was concerned that there would be potentially five members of this council that would be upset if a motion failed. And I figured it would be best to split this out, move it forward, move the one part forward because I wasn't going to vote for one point, one and a quarter million dollars spent because of the sixty-three thousand I believe we need to spend. I mean, that's only five percent of the total amount.
Is it so difficult to pick up the phone and call the rest of council and say, "Hey, I went to the, to the Finance Director and I asked if he could separate this"?
I did not ask anybody to separate anything. I simply voiced my concern being put together.
Okay, I'm sorry. You asked how to, if there was a way that it could be done. Maybe I was.
I had noticed with the counting of heads, so to speak.
But with counting of the heads, with counting of the heads done on Tuesday night when we all agreed that we would pass this, the second and third reading and so that's where I'm getting at.
Basically, yes, I had that thought in my mind, but I wasn't sure how to proceed with it. If you want the truth, there it is. I mean, I, yes, I did think about that. I just wasn't sure exactly where I was with it or how, what question do you even ask?
We have three council members that have been on the record, they're voting no against these appropriations for multiple readings now, multiple legislations. Council shouldn't expect for them to change their, their vote and so the thought process was good. The process was an error. We recognize that the process is an error. Don't need to spend a lot of time talking about how the process came about again here. So, the issue is, do we want to pass these items separately or do we want to send the whole package back and have it show up again in two weeks as a whole package? Mr. Lyons and then Mr. Starline?
Yes, thank you. I think we're, I think we're getting off the topic a little bit. I'm not real sure about, the thinking was right, the process was wrong. I don't know what thinking was, but it just all seemed really bad for me. I wasn't at the work session on Tuesday, but I did get to watch the video because it was uploaded and I too had this question because it seemed to me that the two issues were combined and now they were separated. And we're telling, as a council, we're telling thirty-eight thousand residents on Tuesday one item and then on Monday, we're coming up with two items, whether they're similar, exact, what have you, difference issue. This particular issue, a change from Tuesday to Monday without five council members agreeing, that's a bait and switch. And if we're talking about some secret conversations that were going on, I certainly wasn't made privy to it and it sounds like several other council members weren't privy to that either. And as a result, I understand about, a little bit about the White Opinion. I need to get more in depth, not being an attorney, but certainly members of council could have sent out an email for information only and it wouldn't have a dialogue to violate any Open Meetings Act. But without five council members, as Mrs. Smith mentioned, the decision on Tuesday was countermanded. Now, Mr. Shomar, I realize you had with discussion with Mr. Bell, agreed to that change and I want you to know, I don't have any issue with that at all, but it's very important right now that you speak openly and honestly to the rest of the council. Were you at any time pressured into making that decision because I know the same three council members tried to terminate our city attorney back in April and it seems to be a pattern of what's going on that culminated into an investigation vote two weeks ago? So, I'm just asking you, were you pressured at all in making this decision?
No, I had no conversations with any council members regarding the decision.
Okay, and that was very different than, you know, any decision you made to put a door and a lock on the records room.
Okay, again.
You know, Mr. Lyons, the only pattern here is your comments every time.
Okay, no, we're not going in that direction. We're going to stay on, we're going to stay on the discussion of this particular item.
Well, and it's the same point.
No, it isn't the same point. It never is, okay?
Well, ask him the question then. Was he pressured to change?
He just answered the pressure. Point of order, please. Stop.
Was he?
Stop.
Was he told to keep the door unlocked?
Stop. It's not an appropriate question for this discussion.
I think it is.
And you're wrong and I get to make that decision, so don't ask it again.
If you're going to shut down conversation.
I'm going to shut down that conversation.
All right. I tried.
All right. How did I have the, the council?
Mayor before. I'm not going to ask that question. Can I just make one last statement?
Try a standpoint.
It's my opinion. It's on point.
Mr. Lyons?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Because of this, this is done wrong from the get-go. I personally am going to put vote no for the waiving of the second and third reading, so this goes back to committee. I'm hoping I'm going to have at least one or two other members because you have to have six, I believe, to get this moving. So, was that on point?
That it was. Very much on point. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I try.
Okay. Uh, I'm sorry, I've forgotten which order I had. Mr. Otto, did you speak or were you at? We'll go with Mr. Starline since he seems to be ready for his question.
In light of the comments by Mr. Campbell and the fact that it seems that at least a couple of the council members up here want to discuss this item more, at least for me, I'm going to ask to dissolve my motions away and let's take it back to committee. I'm okay with that.
Okay, so we're withdrawing our motion to waive.
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Otto?
I'm with my predecessor on this one. I think we need to take care of these issues, pay our bills and so can I make a motion to waive?
Uh, is it, we only need the author to, the initiator to?
If he withdraws, then it's withdrawn, so there could be another motion made.
Right, right. We don't need both first and second to withdraw. Okay, so it had been withdrawn. We have a first on a motion to waive. Mr. Shaw?
Second and with the comment from the resident.
We'll have our council discussion and then we'll recognize Mr. Deak. Counsel, Miss Burge?
Um, my comment relates to process and I know that Mr. Shomar is big on process. This whole thing has occurred because we didn't, I didn't really stay within our defined guidelines. I think that if we stood firm that we could make an inquiry of whether staff can do something for us or something, but to make a major change like this, it needs to be a standard procedure that we take it back to a committee and request that change be made, not to just suggest it and then have it implemented. It puts staff in, in an awkward position and it creates havoc on the, on the council and just as a matter of a, of a good process, and it's so easy to do, to, to just ask a question and the, our good staff responds, but we've got to be more systematic about how we do it, that changes like this can't be made until it comes back to council.
Mr. Otto?
Since I've come to this council, I've heard many, many, many comments about working together, um, I don't know, we could use many different terms for it, the general kumbaya situation where we need to come together and agree on some things and help each other out. Well, the bottom line is on this particular situation right here, that's exactly what me and Mr. Starline did. We saw where there was a potential issue with the other side's project and we decided we would do the right thing, put up a flag and let folks know that, hey, there's a potential problem here. We can get on the front side of this and take care of it and you guys can get your things done when the entirety of council is here because we all know there's a split. Let's not argue with that. Let's not argue with that. That was the right thing to do. We could have walked in here, we could have waived second and third on one piece of legislation. We could have voted no with the three of us, knowing we would have. We'd have had three to four, would have failed. Guess what? No funding for number eighteen. Nobody would have been happy about that, but instead, no. Getting a bunch of feedback from the others, from other people who are concerned now all of a sudden about process, and not even realizing, cutting, you know, cutting off their nose despite their face, not even realizing that a helping hand was put out. Um, I'm more than upset about this, but we can move forward.
Ms. Burge.
I disagree with you, Mr. Otto, and I know you're not surprised. The point is, I don't see this as a service to us. I see it as, you disconnected the two issues.
I did not.
You suggested that the two issues be disconnected.
Pointed out a problem. Potential. Simply pointed out a potential issue, didn't suggest that.
Fine, but by separating these two, you put yourself and the people that are not for Deck in a position to kill it. And by keeping them together, you are, it would allow the system to go forward as it was. There's no urgency from what Mr. Shomar said, except perhaps on one issue where he's not sure about. But this is, this is clearly an attempt to separate the issues so that Deck could be treated separately than all the rest of the issues. And you can say whatever you want, Glenn, but everybody on this dais knows.
Wrong. It was, it was a, it was a thought to save the items under K. Otherwise, you'd have had three no votes tonight, four yes votes, the whole thing would have failed.
So next, next meeting, we talk about it again.
Uh, Mr. Lyons.
Um, as an issue of procedure, Tony, if this would not have happened and council members had the best intentions, could not, they had started this meeting and requested to have those issues separate, separated in full view of the council, done that appropriately, received the same issue and the same end result, but yet followed the rules? Could that have been done tonight?
And I'll answer. I know you addressed it.
Well, no, 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 hold on a second. Was that not an appropriate conversation?
That's already been discussed in the fact that we could have had an amendment and pulled these out, exactly the same. So yes, that is one of the ways that it could have been handled, and certainly one that I recommend handling.
Appropriately and properly.
As we go forward.
I'm good with that.
There's, there are many different things about the process, and I think we started this discussion with that, the fact that it came from committee in one, in one form. We expect to see it in that form when we come to the council meetings, and if need be, we'll make amendments to that. Now, it doesn't mean that we haven't had precedents where, uh-
Five council members would have had a point.
No, where staff, where staff has, where staff has noticed that there's an issue with an item that they brought forward and then came forward with a different version. But then, again, it's the same thing. It would have come in amendments, typically comes in amendments. So again, I'm happy to have a discussion about council discipline, but that, that's not where we need to go any further with this particular discussion, okay? So now we have a motion on the floor to waive the second and third readings and the second. Ms. Burge.
We have a motion for Mr. Starline to take it back to committee.
Uh, no, we didn't have a motion for that. What we had was a withdrawal of the motion for-
Okay. Mr. Campbell, did you make one?
I did not. I just recognized-
I'd like to make one.
We have a motion on the floor. It's to waive the second and third reading. If that fails, then it will go back to committee.
Then it will go to committee automatically.
Yeah.
All right. So that's the process. If we have a vote, then it will go back to, to committee. All right? Further discussion? Mr. Deek.
This is probably one of the few times that I actually sat back and watched the long meeting on my TV. And I listened to what everybody was agreeing to, that everything was going to be bundled. Everything was going to be brought forth as one item. Then when I started hearing windages through my ear, and I never thought Mr. Lyons would be correct, but with all due respect, I have to give you that one.
All respect is taken. Thank you, Mr. Deek.
You have a process. I looked it up in the charter. This is what you do. It's on TV. It's on your tape. You agreed to bring it forward as one item lumped together. Because you're playing votes, that's beside the point. You made a decision based on the charter and how to follow it. You broke it. And I bet your wonderful assistant attorney would probably say the same thing. You agreed to bring it forward as one item. You just can't carte blanche, according to the charter, break it apart without an agreement.
I don't actually believe that you're reading the charter correctly on there. There's many ways to bring forth legislation.
But it was agreed to with everybody that was in attendance.
You're absolutely right. It came in one form and it was agreed to in committee. It showed up in the council meeting in a different form. That was not part of an organized process that makes sense. So we've established that. But it wasn't a violation of the charter to go that. It was more of-
I'll find the paragraphs.
Okay.
Council rules?
Or council rules. In fact, council members can bring forth any piece of legislation to be proposed in this session, according to the council, whether it gets passed tonight or not passed tonight, we're there. So as the committee chairman, I have issues and I have had a discussion with Mr. Starline. I have a discussion with Mr. Shomar about what we expect coming out of the committee. All right? So we do expect a better process coming forth in here so that we know that, and what I would expect in this situation would be the original committee recommendation, and then two pieces of legislation for the ordinance, and then that would be similar to what we do on a normal, on a normal basis, and then we could have a, have a discussion about how we want this amended stuff. However, that's not what happened. It's a shame. I was upset about it. Seems like other people are upset about it. We've had a long discussion that we probably should not continue any longer so that we can move on to further business, and we will have a vote on the ordinance, or on the motion that's on the table. And I will recognize Mr. Starline if he can do his readers digest for you.
Well, I'll sit down, but it needs to go back to follow a process.
Thank you.
Actually, Mr. Deek, what I'm going to just highlight is section 5.02 of the charter. It's one sentence, and it says, "Any member of council may introduce any ordinance or resolution at a regular or special meeting which shall be in written or printed form shall contain a concise title." Any member, not two, not three, not five. The charter says any member.
Yeah, but you already agreed to, I'm not getting into legalese, you already agreed to that everything was going to be lumped together, Mr. Starline.
Understood. And here I am in a regular session, and I could introduce a different item. And that is not a charter violation.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Starline. Appreciate you actually finding the reference to which I, that I refer to. But, thank you very much. But as a process, I would have liked to seen what the committee recommended, as well as what other council member recommended. With that, on the motion to waive the second and third readings, call the roll.
Mr. Campbell.
No.
Mr. Otto. Do we need to pay our bills? So yes. Mrs. Burge?
No.
Mr. Lyons?
As according to process, we need to follow it. No.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
No.
Mr. Starline?
No.
All right. And the motion to waive has failed, so we will see this back in the work session and again in a couple of weeks. Moving on to K, or to L, please read the ordinance.
Item 11L, an ordinance authorizing advances between various funds of the City of Huber Heights, Ohio, and amending ordinance number 2015-0-2190 by making supplemental appropriations for expenses of the City of Huber Heights, Ohio, for the period beginning January 1st, 2016, and ending December 31st, 2016, at the first reading.
And call on city manager Rob Shomar for comments.
We'd like this to go to a second reading.
Thank you very much. And calling on Mr. Campbell.
We don't have a committee recommendation on this, so we agree.
Okay. So absent any other discussion, we will have this go back to committee. With that, 12M, please read the resolution.
Item 12M, a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract for the Taylorsville Road storm sewer improvement at the first reading.
And call on city manager Rob Shomar for comments.
Yes, Mr. Bergman discussed in committee the bid and the particular company that is asked and requested to award this bid. It's a cost not to exceed $100,000 for the Taylorsville Road storm sewer improvement project. CG Construction Utilities is the recommended vendor and respondent. It's asked that the second and third reading be waived tonight. This is not written as emergency legislation. However, it allows proper mobilization within those thirty days upon the time that the resolution would take effect and allow this project to go and commence during construction season.
Okay. Thank you very much. And call on council member Glenn Otto for comments.
We did discuss this in our work session, and it was recommended that we go ahead and waive second and third and get this passed tonight. And furthermore, it was originally proposed at $125,000 project, and we have, it has been reduced to $110,000.
Thank you very much. And the committee was, waived the second and third reading, and that motion was made. Mr. Campbell, second. And discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Starline?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Starline?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Starline?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
And passes seven zero. Moving on to 12N, please read the resolution.
Item 12N, a resolution authorizing the city manager of the City of Huber Heights to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs, and to execute contracts as required for the Fishburg Road realignment project at the first reading.
Thank you very much. Call on city manager Rob Shomar for comments.
Yes, as noted in this authorizes the application to participate in the, in the state funding for this particular project. And as discussed in the work session, our engineering department putting this together in order to get that application fulfilled and sent out, although not written as an emergency, it is requested the second and third reading be waived tonight.
Thank you very much. Call on council member Nancy Burge for comments.
Yes, as Mr. Shomar said, we would like to waive the second and third and adopt this, pass this.
Okay. And Mr. Shaw?
Second.
Thank you. Council discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Starline?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
And passes seven zero. Moving on to-
Motion to adopt.
Oh, yes, we will have a motion to adopt. Mr. Campbell, so move. Thank you. Mr. Lyons?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Starline?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
And passes seven zero. Moving on to item 13, action items or future agenda items. Is there anything council wishes to see in a future work session?
Um, yes, I was approached by the Huber Heights VFW and the Miami Valley Young Marines about, this is the fifteen year anniversary for nine eleven. There's no concert scheduled for nine eleven, which is a Sunday, and it would be really nice if we could work together as a team and pull together a really nice nine eleven remembrance ceremony. The agencies that I just spoke of have the protocol or have the, one of the individuals has worked on nine eleven ceremonies before, and I would like to put together a packet. I have a lot of read aheads for this. I don't mind putting it in there. So that's one item that I would like to talk about. A second item that I would like to talk about is, last week, I did ask some very specific questions about the Music Center and how the bands are picked, how they're paid. I haven't got the answers to that, and I don't want to violate any rules of council or charter, so may I have four people so that I can ask Mr. Shomar to give me that information, because I haven't received that information yet. I would still like to speak about Mr. Shomar's proposal about us, we, them, can I say that right? Us, we, them. I'd like to have an update on the 2025 plan, if possible. And I think that's it for now.
Okay. Uh, certainly the nine eleven thing seems to make good sense. The Music Center questions, I guess we can have a brief again on how Mimi brings forth the proposals to you and your vetting process as such. And maybe Mr. Starline will make his proposal again to make sure that an elected official has insights into there like he did when it was originally discussed and passed by council.
Vice.
Vice mayor, yeah, Starline. What's that?
Never mind.
I believe you, you made the proposal to have the mayor also be part of the vetting process of which-
Yes, I did.
Yes, you did, as a matter of fact. But we can go, go ahead and have that discussion again, and you can just prepare a result, give us a little background in case other residents of the city also missed that discussion when it occurred a couple of years ago. Uh, and I'm sorry, what was the last one?
The 2025 plan.
Twenty twenty five, that. Yes, that is on the schedule as an action item to the end of August-ish to talk it. Yes.
It's on the action items, too.
It is. Okay. So we're looking forward to that here in a month and a half. Obviously, there'll be a lot of interest. All right, other council members? Mr. Starline.
I've had a couple of different residents contact me and ask, and express their concern as it relates to door-to-door solicitors and all of that. I know that that issue has been discussed in previous years, but the council at the time did not choose to move forward on that. But I think that it might be beneficial for this new council to discuss, and whether or not we feel we want to adopt something, because at this point, my understanding is, we have nothing on the books that expressly and directly addresses that issue. So I've got a little bit of research on it, and the clerk provided me some information in terms of what we had in the past, so I will prepare to have that for work session.
Okay. I appreciate as much of that previous discussion that we've had to be included in the read ahead as possible, to give us a good background.
I will coordinate with Tony to do so.
Okay. Thank you very much. And counsel? Well, then let me say, as was brought up earlier in the discussion about protocols for a lot of things, council discipline or the interaction with staff, and that, I know hard-headed and wanting to be in control and stuff, but I actually consider myself as being rather laissez-faire, uh, about things, so the fact that, uh, Mr. Starline reached out and, and had a, a discussion that turned this into two pieces of legislation, wasn't an item that, you know, I felt that I needed to stomp my feet on and do something Friday about, because it's not my personality, because I quite frankly like the initiative, uh, and I understood, uh, the reasoning in some part about why council members wouldn't have wanted to, uh, be put in the position of voting down everything in the, in the package in order to stay on, uh, point with the other votes that they've had. But, uh, that said, it really isn't good for the city to go outside of the process, uh, that much so that we see, so the residents can't, uh, depend on what's going on, on what we see in the council work sessions and the decisions made by council. And, you know, the, uh, other item that came up this week is, uh, the flag ceremony and how that occurred without council vetting or committee vetting as well. There's certainly processes in place for, for, uh, the resources and the, and the, uh, organization of, uh, communicating with other communities and the residents about something as, uh, as dear to people's hearts as, uh, something like that could be. So, uh, it certainly would have benefited by following the normal processes for organizing a, a city event. So, uh, I think we need to have a discussion of that, and to include, uh, how, uh, council needs to make sure that, uh, they interact with the staff, so we'll be looking for, uh, Mr. Scholmer to maybe formalize, uh, those, uh, processes. And I know you've been relatively laissez-faire as well, giving full access pretty much to everybody, which is perfectly your, uh, purview. You can allow as much access to staff as, as you like, but if that's the way that, that you want it to run, I'd like to see you formalize it in some form of writing, so that, so that we know, uh, what the expectation is, because you get to control, get to control it, but if, uh, if we're going to have instances where we have council members saying that they took a conversation with the staff member one-way, and maybe that, uh, staff member may not have had that same impression, then we need to at least have it formalized that we're going to have that kind of, uh, issue come up on multiple occasions. So, uh, we'll look for some kind of discussion like that in the, in one of the upcoming work sessions. And, Ms. Smith?
I read the rules of charter, uh, the rules of council. I read the charter. It directs us to go through the city manager and our clerk of council, which is exactly what I did around June 28th. I asked him if he had any issues with it, what he thought of the idea, he thought it was great. He said, actually, on his, on his behalf, he said, "We, we care, we carry spare flags. It's really not necessary to have them donated, but if that's what they want to do, that's fine." So, I would like somebody to show me in the rules of council or the charter where I violated that procedure, because I feel like I did not, and, and it would help me so that when I move forward, that this doesn't happen again. Now, the email that I received from you, Mr. Mayor, was not so much that it didn't, well, I think you did actually say it didn't go through staff. Everybody got an invitation. It was not my event. Two agencies came to me and asked me, since it was in my ward, would I be willing to participate? I could have done this as a ward meeting if I wanted to, but I didn't. I wanted to do this for the best and the betterment of this community, so I invited everybody, and I mean everybody, I have the base chaplain, I have two senators that have sent proclamations to be said, and, you know, I don't see anywhere in this charter or the rules of council that say that the mayor is the, the sole person that decides what the city will participate in and what they won't, because, you know what? I have a ward meeting coming up. I've invited the entire community. It's at Shaw Park Road, Shawgate Road. Am I supposed to get approval for that as well? I, I, I had a, I had a city event and brought in the State Treasures Department to give an opengov.com and a checkbook.com, and I wasn't supported at that time by, by members and heads of this governing body, so why would you wait until Friday afternoon to threaten to send a letter out to cancel this event because I didn't follow proper procedures? I'd like somebody to explain that to me or show it to me in writing.
This forum here is to get things on the agenda items for the next work session, so I'd like to, since this event is tomorrow, stay on the positive and hope that many people get to participate and, and, uh, and come and see the flag ceremony that's scheduled at the Music Center tomorrow at 4:00. And then we will use this as a case example and some of the other issues that you bring forward, examples that you bring forward, to discuss what proper protocol and proper procedures are, so that we know that, uh, what kind of support we can expect from the staff, and what kind of coordination needs to be made through the council in order to make sure that each event is, uh, successful and well-organized. All right, um, moving on to the next thing, city official reports and comments. And we'll start with, uh, Mr. Lyons.
Uh, yes, Mayor, on July 1st of this year, uh, you responded to a formal complaint, um, and I appreciate getting that information. Did you have, uh, have you been contacted about that complaint, at least the part that named you? Have you been contacted by the vice mayor?
Uh, we did see that, uh, Mr. Starline had, uh, sent out an update saying that he needed more time to, uh, discuss, uh, there, and that email is, uh, available to all council members and part of the public record, and that's the last that I've heard on, on his portion of the investigation.
I, I may have missed that, but, um, I don't think I got it, so I'll, I'll talk to Tony about that. That's fine, I was just looking for an update, so...
Thank you very much.
And, uh, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Starline?
To clarify, since it was an interim report, I followed what the rules of council required, which was I contacted the person who made the complaint, Ms. McGee. I confirmed with her that she received it. I provided that also to the mayor, because he is the subject of the investigation. I provided a copy to the clerk as a matter of, um, bookkeeping, and I provided it to both the law director and our assistant law director, um, because of needing the electronic information, because there was some sensitive information, although I don't believe it's confidential or outside of pub, uh, public records, but because of the reason why I was holding back, I didn't make that a matter of public knowledge to everyone, nor did I have to. You've asked, I appreciate the fact that, oh, wait, I'm sorry, you didn't ask me except for here in the public domain trying to call me out in the middle of a meeting.
I'm on, Mr. Starline.
There, you clarify.
I think that is my, my college, I thought.
Hi.
That's not your fault, I understand. Um, will that opinion become forthcoming?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And, Mayor, um, I completely understand, um, maybe I should have reached out to Mr. Starline, but last time I called him, he didn't return my phone call, so it's kind of hard.
All right, thank, thank, thank you, Mr. Lyons. All right, did you have another?
No, sir, that's all I had. Thank you very much for your...
Ms. Bird?
Um, first of all, I want to, um, the Star Spangled Celebration, as everyone who went knows, it was absolutely awesome. My personal thanks go out to Margie, all, the Arts and Beautification Committee, Black Gray, and all the volunteers. This is the biggest, most awesome event I've seen in our city in all the years that I lived here. I've received two pieces of concerning feedback that I wanted to share with Mr. Scholmer. You mentioned that there were more cars that were in the park this time. I guess there were people that said they were so far back that some of the debris from the fireworks went on the cars, and probably because there was no breeze or whatever, but it might be something that we think about next year, and the fact that it took so long to get out of the parking lot, some people said it took an hour and a half. Part of it because the ones that were up near Brant Pike, as they were going up, didn't realize that there was a left-turn lane or something, so everybody stayed in the right lane till they got up there and saw it. But if there's any way that we can open another exit, um, next year, if this is going to continue to get bigger and bigger, it's something we need to think about. But overall, just a fantastic event, everybody did a great job. Police National Night Out is on August 2nd at Wayne High School from 6:00 to 9:00. Unfortunately, that conflicts with one of our meetings, and I would hope that we could find a way to allow us to participa- I think it's working meeting, that we would find a way to allow the council to parti- participate in it at least for an hour or something. So, maybe we can put that on the agenda. It was on, it's on August 2nd at Wayne High School from 6:00 to 9:00, and, yeah, so I, I would really like to attend it, as I think everybody on this dais would, um, but maybe we can talk about it at the, at the work session and see if we can come up with a, a compromise or a workaround or something.
Well, we're here at 9:00 on work sessions, anyway, we could just start at 9:00.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Okay.
I'll, I'll throw some alternatives out, too.
Okay, and my last one is, I'm having a Ward 5 meeting on July 28th at the Huber Heights Library from 7:00 to 8:30 to talk about ballot issues and listen to Ward 5 residents' concerns, however, everyone is welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Otto?
I would also like to say the, uh, the parade and the Star Spangled Heights on Saturday were amazing, um, and of course, we were in the parade, and then I had the opportunity to help set up at the, uh, the Star Spangled Heights, and I was there till, I had the opportunity to help tear some of it down, and Arts and Beautification did do an amazing job this year. My hat's off to them, uh, they work very hard, and, and thanks to all of them. Congratulations to Chief Lightner on his, uh, grand son, daughter, okay? That's awesome. Uh, my, my grandkids are coming this Thursday to spend a few weeks with us, so I'm pretty excited about that. I know where he's at right now, and that's exciting. What else? I want to make additional comments, but I'm, uh, I'm being advised not to by some. So, I'll go ahead and move on. Wish everyone a nice evening, and, uh, thank you very much for coming out tonight.
Mr. Starline?
I join my colleagues in congratulating and thanking so much to Margie and all of the Arts and Beautification, um, that helped with the parade and the, the Star Spangled Heights Festival and all of that, it was phenomenal. I also realized that Scott Falkowski had come down that Saturday, and he, to my understanding from talking with Margie, he didn't have to come down, but he did to try to help organize it, um, and then he and I decided to go and at least taste-test at least a couple of the vendors to make sure that everything was in the up and up. I don't think it was a full-blown inspection, but at least it was good stuff. I can say that I was well-fed that night, and it was a great time. The food trucks were phenomenal. I also want to thank the Arts and Beautification Commission for putting on another stellar community movie night, Saturday night. One thing in particular, they have coordinated with one of the local churches to hand out waters and pop popcorn and all of that. Much to my surprise, the movie was one of the Jurassic Park ones, and they actually had somehow, through one of their connections, made arrangement for a model Tyrannosaurus head to be there for photo-taking. That was phenomenal, and I, I thank them for that. They were trying to talk me into putting my head there, and I had a feeling how that would go. I've seen the first Jurassic Park with what happens to the lawyer when he's near the T-Rex, so, but my kids loved it. To the Charter Commission, I didn't get a chance to join in, but since several of them are here, thank you for all of the effort on that, to come in to something that is as cumbersome as going through legal document like this and working. I appreciate it. I've come to some, I've stayed away at others, um, in terms of trying to let them bring forth their position, so I want to go on record here of saying thank you to the Charter Commission. I look forward to seeing what they do in the rest of the items. I also want to extend some thanks. There is at Chambersburg and Brant Pike, there's the Four Corners Project that's going on, uh, going on in terms of, it's been beautified. I, uh, appreciate the fact Rotary Chamber, I believe it was Arts and Beautification, and I'm blanking on the name of the church, but I think there was a... Thank you. So, those four came and decorated, or beautified those corners. If you all haven't had a chance to go look, please go look, it is safely, go look. But it was a great, um, thing that they do, and my understanding is, at least part, if not all, of that is some sort of grant funding, so it helps with that. I do want to count out, because I think Melissa McGee, you are on both Rotary and Chamber and helped with two of those, so she's got at least half of the four corners, um, have her, uh, green thumb shown in that, and I think that's appropriate. Last item, uh, is to just remind folks that Saturdays at the Huber Center out front is the Farmer's Market, it goes from 9:00 to 1:00. Rain or shine, they've got, um, uh, a lot of variety from local honey to local milk to local meats to just all sorts of yummy stuff, and, uh, recommend folks to go do that beyond that. For my part in creating confusion, I apologize. I will, uh, talk with Mr. Scholmer, but in the end, if there was confusion on this, I put it on my shoulders, not theirs. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. The first thing I would like to do is I would like to express my sincere gratitude to all of the residents who came out and helped wrap the poles with blue ribbon in support of our police department and all police officers across the nation. I, I was very proud to see that, and I'm really glad to see that our community stands behind our police department. They're very well-organized, they are very professional in their jobs, and frankly, we'd be in big trouble if they weren't here. So, I just want to thank the residents for, for, um, joining me and wrapping the poles with the ribbon. I'd also like to thank the Huber Heights Fire Department for inviting council to be, to participate in a fire burn exercise tomorrow. Nancy and I went last week to get fitted for our, our gear, and we're going to be going into a home that's going to be filled with smoke, and then it'll be on fire, and then we're going to get the help with the hoses, so it's a very exciting event, and, um, I just wanted to say thank you to the Huber Heights Fire Division for allowing us to see what their day-to-day jobs are. Very interesting. I'd like to thank the Charter Review for such an outstanding job that you guys have done. I want to thank you for your time, your service, your dedication, because this is all volunteer... I want to thank you for your time, your service, your dedication, because this is all volunteer and you guys have done a phenomenal job. I would also like to thank the Arts and Beautification Committee for, for a fantastic Star Spangled Banner, um, event. Um, the only, the only other thing that I might add, I mean, it was just absolutely perfect. Um, if I do, I was, it was reported to me that the Dayton Police Department had to come out, um, where the old Myers used to be because people couldn't get out. And then the actual Brant Pike was so congested that I'm just going to make a suggestion and maybe we have, you know, security people that kind of, or even Pride or somebody. I, everybody was tapped out because a lot of people volunteered, but if we could have somebody just kind of guiding traffic to help get that out, that's just one, one quick thing. But other than that, I think they did a really out, an outstanding job. Um, I'd also like to remind everybody that they are invited to the flag dedication ceremony tomorrow. Um, this is a collaboration along with the VFW here in Huber Heights and it also is in collaboration with the Miami Valley Young Marines and they will be doing a, um, a 21-gun salute. So, um, it'll be a very exciting event. Um, also, I'm going to read real quick again, one of the, um, messages I got, um, for, um, a business that's having a red ribbon cutting ceremony this Friday at five P.M. Um, again, what she says is, "Hello, Mrs. Smith. I am a Huber Heights resident and a member of one of the Facebook websites and I wanted to ask if you could spare an hour or so of your time on the fifteenth of July to help bring attention to the business servicing our community. I work at Hearts for ABA on Brant Pike. We are a learning sitter for children with autism and other challenges. As of now, we have only had the space to service children from the ages of three to twelve with a very long waiting list. Our owner, Nicole Mori, has purchased the church at the corner of Tomberg and Fishburg and we will be moving there. There will be a ribbon-cutting ceremony on July fifteenth at five P.M. with our Montgomery County Commissioner present to cut the ribbon. This is an, this is the day of our open house for the families, but we want to welcome the community to walk through and see what is happening in their neighborhood. The best part of all of this is Nicole is expanding to now include services to older children and adults. We will be setting up programs to teach life skills in addition to the services that are provided to the younger kids. We had ABA therapists, natural environment teaching and speech and language development skills as well as managing sensory deficits and social, socialization skills." Um, so I just wanted to extend to all of council that you are all invited. They would like it if you could come. Um, if they don't, they understand. Um, the other thing that I'd like to talk about is, um, I also will be having a Ward Two meeting, but it is also a community picnic. Um, it will be held on July twenty ninth. It will be at Shawgate Park from six P.M. to eight P.M. Um, I have a guest, a special guest, um, Representative Mike Haney will be there to discuss any, um, concerns the residents may have on legislation on the state level. And then we will be there just to talk about whatever the residents want to talk about, whatever they feel is necessary or they would like to bring to my attention. It, it will be a lot like what Mr. Schommer had suggested last week. It will really be facilitated by what the people want to talk about and then I will just bring this back to council. Um, I am providing free hot dogs, potato salad, chips, water, and I just want everybody to know that this is a family-friendly event. There'll be bubbles, there'll be sidewalk chalk for the children. And anybody who, I, I don't drink, but I'm not going to, um, take that privilege away from somebody who would like, so it's a bring your own beer. I do have a liquor permit, um, so I do have, uh, a guideline or restrictions on how that can be. So if anybody has any questions and they want to RSVP, I can give them those guidelines and those rules. Um, at this ward, community, um, meeting and picnic, um, we will have a table, um, for information on registered voters because there, it has been a purge and many people aren't aware that they could have possibly been purged off of the voter registration list. And so if they go to vote in November and find out that they haven't voted in the last couple, um, presidential elections, they may not be registered to vote anymore. Um, the other thing is that we are taking donations for the fish food pantry at this event as well. Um, the last thing that I'd just like to, to tell you is that the Miami Valley Young Marines is offering a Narcan training on July twenty first at St. Peter's at six P.M. And, um, I definitely would like to be there for that because I think the heroin epidemic is, um, is, it's terrible. And, um, other than that, that's all I have, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Shaw.
I have no comment.
Thank you very much. Actually, I appreciate, uh, Ms. Smith's comments there. I, uh, was going to mention the ABA, uh, myself there. She did a very thorough job, uh, with that and, uh, um, I think they'd appreciate, uh, seeing the community come out for their, uh, their ribbon cutting on a Friday night, uh, like that. I, I do want to also say though, that because I disagree with the recommendation from the, uh, Charter Committee, doesn't mean that I don't appreciate that individuals have come out and spent their time and worked on making those recommendations. All right? I disagree with going to one reading and having it taken effect immediately. And I will broadcast my disagreement as long as it stays that way. But that does not mean that I don't appreciate that we have citizens that come out here and spent as much time working on the, uh, the charter as, uh, this commission has done. And with that, I will, uh, call the meeting and adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.